Welcome to our April 21st School Board meeting. We will start with our agenda, approval, deletions, additions. Dr. Varaco.
Thank you, Mrs. Seuss. You do have one amendment to the agenda. It's under Roman numeral seven E. Some professional leave requests for Mrs. Gramala.
Motion for approval.
Motion from Dr. Malco.
Second.
Second from Mrs. Talent. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Is there any correspondence? Mrs. Kelly?
There is not, Mrs. Seuss.
Thank you. We'll move right into our Liaison Committee updates. Mrs. Kelly?
Yes, I don't have anything for redevelopment. Sherrville Parks, however, they are hiring for summer positions. Great opportunities for high school kids. And they're also posting their summer programs. So check those out and sign the kids up. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Talent?
Okay. I have to remember to turn this thing on. All right. Concerning the Dyer Redevelopment Committee, they did go over and review a bit of some old business and did share that the tax says that are shared within the Dyer area where there is some land that's available that become TIF districts, the Lake Central School Corporation will receive that notification in mid to early June. Also, they are working on walking trails which affects families and students in that area. And the last thing that they reviewed was on May 31st, Dyer Kickers is celebrating 50 years of being a wonderful organization within our tri-town area or in Dyer area and providing a lot of good physical exercise. So you are invited to come out on the 31st beginning at 9:00 a.m. at Central Park there in Dyer. Concerning the Wellness Committee, they were able to meet on April 10th. Mrs. Castaneda, thank you for keeping us all informed. I was unable to be there. However, in her report, she did notice and let us know that they will continue to do the STEP program to help with health across the corporation. And they will do some format changes and begin that again in the '25-'26 school year, hopefully after the holiday. They are also working on some initiatives to encourage mental health for the staff. And one of the things they're going to look at is just some de-stressing techniques. Perhaps we could all utilize that.
I think that's all. And Dr. Malco?
The Lake Central Education Foundation met last week. Very, very well organized. They have a strategic plan. They have goals. It's come down to the committee levels and they're working together to bring the organization to a higher level. What I found really exciting is a pickleball tourney that's going to be held, I believe, in July. I thought that was real cute. But that's it for Education Foundation Legislative. Dr. Varaco, I see you have it on your agenda, so I will let you talk about that. And Dyer Parks, I believe their meeting is next week. Thank you.
And for the Redevelopment Committee that I am on, I have nothing but for dollars for scholars. Those RSVPs from the seniors are due because May 14th is scholarship night. So get those in if you haven't. Now, we'll move on to our official School Board Business Topics Consent Agenda. Dr. Varaco?
Thank you again. Seek board approval for the minutes from our executive session on March 17th, our regular meeting on March 17th, and our regular meeting on April 7th. Also seek board approval for the claims, payroll, and extracurricular expenditures that you received in your packets last week.
I would like to make a motion to approve those items.
Motion from Mrs. Kelly?
Seven.
Second from Dr. Malco. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. And there are no public comments regarding action items, so we'll move right into our official School Board Business Topics Regular Agenda. Dr. Varaco?
All right. We're going to begin with some high school recognitions for outstanding achievement. We'll begin with asking Mr. Smolinski to come up to introduce the sponsor and/or the participants in the State Leadership Conference for FCCLA.
Start this off. Thank you, Dr. Varaco. Okay, so I will, I'm going to start by introducing our FCCLA awards from the State Leadership Conference. So the Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America, FCCLA, returned from State Leadership Conference on February 28th boasting some outstanding finishes in their competition events. Iya Canan, Savannah Jones, Kaitlin Blair, Sophie Dragos, and Callie O'Donnell entered in bronze medals for projects in nutrition, wellness, and fashion design. Jonathan Gregorius and Adeline Mackey brought home silvers in the fashion design project. And Andrew Havig brought home the gold in the lesson planning projects. We are exceptionally proud of the hard work put forth by these students and their outstanding projects. So first, I would like to call up our bronze recipients. Kaitlin Blair. Also bronze, Callie O'Donnell. And Iya Canan, bronze. And one more, bronze Savannah Jones.
The Lake Central Cheerleaders are being recognized this evening for winning a state championship on November 9th down at Newcastle High School. Not only did they win state in the timeout division, but they were state runner-up in the traditional division, losing only by one-tenth of a point. The cheer competition is sponsored by the Indiana Association of School Principals. And we've been attending it probably since 1993. And we've won some state championships, several state championships over the years. And I'm just very proud of the girls. Also, two of the seniors, we have three seniors named to the all-state cheer team, and two of them are here this evening, and that's Madeline Biggerstaff and Peyton Morris. Skylar Eor, I don't think is here this evening. Emmy Gabler. Autumn Garcia, not here this evening. Ashlyn Hayes. Edison Carrages, not here this evening. Kelsey Kulakowski. Morgan Mahoney, who is not here this evening. Ava Martinez. Cadence Moore, not here this evening. Peyton Morris. Carly Newton. Cameron Pankos, not here this evening. Savannah Snyder, not here this evening. Stephanie Tuftel. And Gabriela Salamanca.
Thank you. Before I recognize our varsity, I want to first recognize our junior varsity, our junior varsity dancers. Many of them are here in the audience. They are also state champions in both palm and hip-hop, and also our national champions in hip-hop. So congrats to our JV. All right. Moving on to our varsity team. Our varsity team went down to the state championships this, I'm not sure when. You're with dates, I'm not so good with dates. But what I will tell you is that we're here for a reason, and that is that they won their 58th state championship. The varsity won in jazz and palm and were runner-up in hip-hop. And, go ahead, sure. And they were also top-three at nationals. So very proud of our varsity and their accomplishments. Before we get to the certificates, I want to make sure I thank the parents, many of those who are here. I want to make sure we thank our school board, thank our admins, thank the community, and also the admin, I'm sorry, the athletic department led by Mr. Inyard behind me. Ladies, when you come up, you've seen the routine. Bryn Beerwinger. Jessica Kleghorn. Haley Danielson. Ally Eggbrit. Kate Kajuski. Miss Piper Love Connor. Haley McCoy. Ava McQuillan. Sidney Rippey. Miss Sophia Sable. Abigail Samaga. Gabrielle Waters. And Tessa Wilsons.
name last year when we did this. So thanks for bailing me out, Kevin. Our next program is going to be our boys swim team and Coach Kalinsky.
All right. We'll recap the season really quick. This year, our boys swim team, we were sectional champions. We set two school records. I believe one was from '99. We set the 200 medley relay record, and we set the 200 free relay record this year. Now, once I have the kid, the guys come up, I'll tell them what they did at state and all that good stuff. So our first one, oh, coaches, yeah, coaches come up. Riley Ingram. Rod Smith. All right. So our first one would be Cal Bowman. Cal Bowman was part of our 200 medley relay, which was sectional champs, and school record, and our 200 free relay, which were sectional champions. Cal also placed ninth in the 50 free and 16th in the 100 free this year. Our next one would be Tim Hampton. Tim Hampton was, again, he was on both of the record-setting relays this year, and both sectional champion relays this year. And going back a little bit, our 200 free relay, we did place 13th at the state meet this year. Cam was part of our 200 free, the school record, and also the 13th place relay at state. And sectional champions. Our next one would be Dylan Pacheco. Dylan was part of our record-setting 200 medley relay and sectional champ. And our last would be K. Use, I'll say this name wrong, Resavinsky. He was part of our 200 free and 200 medley relay, record-setting and sectional champions this year. All right. Again, I would like to thank the parents this year who are here for coming in and supporting your kids tonight. If you guys want to stand up, you can. You don't have to. But we thank our parents also. But we thank our parents also.
All right, thanks again, everybody, for coming out and celebrating our successes. We're going to continue on with the business meeting of our board. You're welcome to stay. You're also welcome to head home if you have other things to take care of. Thank you.
Boy, it's getting warm in here now, isn't it? The Ken Newton's daughter is the central out of my, oh, she's a cheerleader. Did we call her a name?
All right, moving on. My second item this evening is just to update the board, members of our audience and those viewing at home. What's happening in the general assembly as of this week. The official deadline for the session to end is next Friday. However, there are rumors out that they hope to be done this week. So, if that's the case, there's a lot of work to still be done on the budget bill, which I'll get to in a moment. But first, I want to talk about the school board partisan elections. The bill's author, Gary Byrne, is on the record of saying, you know, this bill is about accepting the reality and no longer pretending that our school boards are something they haven't been for a long time. Suggesting that we are already really partisan. So, we might as well make it official. And, you know, he and some of the proponents believe that having a political affiliation allows other members, voter, voting members of the public to believe they're voting for someone who has ideas more aligned to theirs. I did a presentation to the Chamber of Commerce last week, and I shared that, you know, I can make the argument that even town councils shouldn't run with a political affiliation. The objective should be, this is what I want to do for, in our case, the students who go to Lake Central Schools. In the case of the town, this is what I want to do to make the quality of life better for residents of Shererville or St. John or whatever. So, I personally don't agree with it. However, as I've said at this group before, I'm not going to spend most of my capital or my note writing or emails to our elected officials on these one. They're such important monetary issues that are being passed down at the state house. There are fears from people who are really against it that elected board members could become, you know, more accountable to their party, or more loyal to their party than they are to the actual school organization. I think that is possible. But I also think it's administration's job to make sure that board members always know the most important issues facing our students, and convince them on how to make those choices on resource allocation and other. So, that item will come to a head, I think, this week. And we'll see what happens with it. The second big piece tonight I want to touch on is what's now Senate Enroll Act One. The property tax relief bill, already signed into law by Governor Braun last week. A lot of Hoosiers are questioning, why was this taken up for a vote right before the revenue forecast? And there are others who are saying, okay, well, now that we have the revenue forecast, it's so bad. Maybe we need to revisit Senate Enroll Act One. I mean, it is designed to give property tax relief to homeowners in Indiana especially. Mostly at the expense of schools, some at the expense of cities and towns. And one of the solutions that some people who have voted for it have said is, well, you can increase or vote for a bigger local option income tax. For us, of course, we don't get any of that, so that wouldn't help us. But more importantly, why are we taking away one tax that people are accustomed to, and then going to try to pass through some other increase in some other area in income? If we doubled our income tax in Lake County, our county income tax would be higher than the state income tax. So, it will be hard for Lake County to do that, in my opinion. Anyway, as I've been saying since the beginning, when we cut money that goes to operations, and this is, this property tax piece is the side that goes to operations, that's our energy bills, our cost to operate schools, our various insurances for property and liability insurance and all that kind of stuff. You know, it means that more money will have to be transferred out of the education fund. And when money gets transferred out of the education fund, that's fewer dollars available for services to students. My chamber presentation did include a little piece talking about what we, you know, had to do back in 2010 to 2012. Where we had to actually do reductions in force. This time, we're in much better financial position. But as I said to a couple of reporters last week as well, you know, you wouldn't want to overspend in any given year by much. It's not like we have a giant cash balance. And so, we have to be really careful with what we do with our expenditures. We will analyze every retirement and resignation to determine if there's a way for us to get by without that individual in the short term. The final piece I wanted to talk about is House Bill 1001. That's the budget bill. This is the piece that includes tuition support, which is how we fund our classrooms. This bill is currently in what they call conference committee, so members of both the Senate and House are visiting, trying to hash out their differences. If you recall, the Senate did pull the voucher expansion piece out of the bill, given the tight revenue forecast. Some members of the House, including the Speaker, are still fighting to put the voucher expansion piece back into the bill. So, you know, Indiana has passed, honestly, balanced budgets is the term they use, for many years. I expect that to happen again, and quite honestly, I'm okay with it. But with the tariffs and federal spending cuts leading to a reduced revenue forecast, with Medicaid costs increasing, Senator Mishler and Representative Thompson, the two people in each chamber who are responsible for the budget, are saying that everything is now on the table. So, what that means, we're going to soon find out. But the interesting piece that Senator Mishler said in his interview last Thursday, I believe, was, as bad as 2009 was, when the revenue forecast was cut by 1.4 billion, this particular forecast cuts the revenue forecast by $2.3 billion. $400,000 for the remainder of the current calendar year, and then another $2 billion for 2026 and 2027. So, again, the session is scheduled to end by 4:29. So, the next few days should bring some clarity. I would ask those people who make the argument all the time that we don't fund systems, we fund students. This is why we have to have vouchers and money following the students. Then it's time to really analyze what the proper amount is for various services that we're providing to students. I'll again use speech as an example because it's funded at about 50% of what it costs us to provide the service. So, if that's the argument we're going to make, then let's make it, let's make that argument honest. And let's properly fund the specialty services that, granted, most of the students receiving them are in public schools. But many of them, especially in the area of speech, are also in private schools. So, when we were getting more money in our tuition support, it did allow us to more easily subsidize those special services. It's harder to subsidize those special services now. Any questions about any of those items?
Dr. Varco, do you know the result of the vote for the Gary Burns political party associated with school board members? Was that vote today?
I did not hear that it was taking place today, but it could have happened late.
Okay. Okay, Gary Byrne, I just researched him. He is from Burnsville, Indiana. Same name, same town. He's from southern Indiana, down by Tell City. And I would, I plan to write him an email because I think that we, as a Lake Central school board, tried very, very, very hard to keep ourselves non-political. We talk about it, we work at it, and the fact that he is assuming that we are that way kind of irritates me. So, just my opinion.
Well, I think it's going to be more important than ever that candidates for school board do what I said earlier, and that is, state unequivocally what it is you want to do to make the system better for students we serve. And hopefully, the voting public, if all they say is, I'm a good Republican, or I'm a great progressive Democrat, that that's not enough to get elected. It has to be, what are you going to do for our students? What are you going to fight for, for our students?
Thank you for that, Dr. Varco. And now, on to our Assistant Superintendent, Mrs. Castaneda.
Thank you. For my first item, I am seeking the board's approval for the personnel recommendations that you received in your board packet.
Move for approval.
We have a motion from Dr. Malco, and I will second that. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you. And for my next item, I'd like to ask Mr. Enyard to come back up, and he's going to give us our high school winter sports report. The board may want to move to the seats down in front to see the presentation.
Usually, my voice carries well enough, but Mrs. Seuss told me I had to use the mic, so here we go. For our winter student athlete participants, we had 137 girls across the sports, 100 of our boys. And 37% of those, which last year, I think, was at 35, maintained a 3.666 GPA, which gives them our Scholar-Athlete Award for their season. Income, game receipts and passes were about, were $53,514.40. Fundraising and fees for all the teams. The weight room and training room fee were $150,029.40. And concessions were $34,245.51, for a total of $237,788.95. For expenses, game workers and security, $17,585. Officials, $19,616.57. One thing about officials, we currently using a signer, and they gave us a projected or proposed officials rating that since they are signers, if that's what they want, that's what we have to pay. If they stick with the current one, it would cost us, on average, probably $15,000 to $20,000 more next year alone to hire officials for all our contests. We'd probably do that for one year and go back to just doing it ourselves, and paying them with the DAC rate that we have. So, they say they're going to come back with a second proposal because there was a lot of conversations about it, but we'll see if that happens or not. Golf course rental fees for our golf teams, $6,400. That pays for them, for both teams, for the year. We pay that in January. They enjoy that check when it's off-season and, but, you know, it's a fair price for what I see a lot of other courses are charging nowadays. So, our partnership with Palmyra is great, and we enjoy continuing to work with them. Equipment, team gear, team travel and lodging, that cost was $143,746.66. That pays for everything from balls to additional uniforms outside of the Booster Club money, to their overnight competitions and lodging. Training room and weight room, that's a $30 fee that we, that parents pay on final forms. $6,515.11. Oh, no, that's what we paid out. So, we charge them on final forms, the $30 fee. I think right now, with all the spring sports included, we probably have 300 student athletes that are yet to pay that fee. Miscellaneous, that's flowers, tickets, membership dues, awards. We've had, we had a couple, Kelly Kamara was inducted to the Indiana High School Basketball Hall of Fame. You know, so we purchased a sponsorship for her. Mike Schwarzentruber was inducted into the Baseball Hall of Fame in the fall, or early, or late fall, early winter. So, all letterman's patches, certificates, all the conferences that our coaches come for. So, that's where the miscellaneous is kind of our catch-all. $19,367.36. And then concessions, $18,596.55, for a total of $231,827.25. As you can see with income and expenses, what we bring in, we always try to put out. So, we try to give, we always try to give it back to the kids unless we're looking for a big ticket item that purchase that we're looking for. Football, reconditioning, new helmets and shoulder pads, that cost me $29,094.49. That's an increase of $5,000 from last year. So, our season results, boys basketball, we hosted that this year. They lost a crown point in the sectional championship game. Boys swimming, as you heard a little bit ago, they placed second in the DAC. They were sectional champions, and which, that race, that came down to the very last race. It was a great meet. And, you know, we needed a certain placement, and we got what we needed, so we were the champions. Boys wrestling, we qualified several wrestlers for sectionals and regionals. And our 106-pound Cruz Arweta placed sixth at the state meet this past winter. And the girl's side, the girls' basketball finished second in the DAC. They were six and one, lost to Valpo. They also lost in the sectional championship. Girls' swimming finished fourth in the DAC. Girls' gymnastics finished third in the DAC, and then they qualified for regionals. Cheer, again, as we heard, won IASP state championship. And dance, they won their 30th consecutive IHSDTA state championship, 30 years. They've had a state championship every year of its existence, as you heard from Kevin. It's 58 total. There's three divisions now that you can win a state championship. So, jazz, hip hop and palm. And in girls' wrestling, this was the first year as an official IHSA sport. Reese Kaprzak placed eighth at the 110 pounds. We had four female wrestlers. We're hoping to grow that significantly. Most of the conference teams filled mostly full squads, not full squads. But it's a growing sport. We had 15 girls sign up, and we finished the year of four. It's a growing sport. And if your heart's not in it, it's a tough one to finish through. And that brings me to the end of our winner. Are there any questions or anything?
He was in.
He was inducted to the Indiana Baseball Hall of Fame.
Wasn't he talking about...
Kevin Mathis was also inducted into the Hall of Fame. I received no information on that about a sponsorship for the table or event. And then Chris Hall was actually selected as one of the national, I was just released as one of the national, or in Indiana, Athletic Trainer Awards. So, we'll be recognizing him.
And then young man that is the assistant basketball coach? He had recognition too, but I'm not sure.
Yeah, Jim Sumitano on the web.
Young man, that was a best. Oh, Ricky Gard, yes. Sorry, I was thinking boys. Yeah, Ricky Gard was, was selected at their state conferences assistant coach, one of the assistant coaches of the year for the district.
Very cool.
Yep. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, this is Castaneda, ladies and gentlemen, a double school announcement.
Yes, they're going to come and do a joint winter and spring report, the second meeting in May.
Okay.
Thank you. And now on to our Director of Primary Education, Dr. Racy.
Good evening. For my first item, I am seeking your approval for the professional leave request in your packets.
Motion to approve. Motion for Ms. Kelly.
Second.
Second for Ms. Talent. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. And for my next item, I am seeking your approval for the field trip request in your packets.
So moved.
Motion from Dr. Malco, and I will second that. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And our Director of Secondary Education, Mrs. Shuniman.
Thank you. For my first item, I'm seeking the board's approval for the professional leave requests included in your board packet.
Motion to approve. Motion for Ms. Kelly.
Second.
Second for Mrs. Talent. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. And for my second item, I'm seeking the board's approval for the field trip request also included in your packet.
Move for approval.
Motion from Dr. Malco, and I will second that. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you. And now our Director of Student Services, Mrs. Gormala.
Thank you. My only item tonight is to seek your approval for the professional leave request that was at your station this evening.
So moved.
Motion for Mrs. Talent.
I'll second.
Second for Ms. Kelly. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our Director of Business Services, Mr. James.
Thank you. My first item is to seek your approval for the donations that were included in your board packet.
Motion. Okay. Go ahead, James. We have a motion from Dr. Malco, and I will second that. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you. For my second item, we have finished the end of March, and that would be the third quarter of our fiscal year. So at your stations, I've left two spreadsheets that we go over to give a financial update to the board. The first sheet that was on top, if you look in the top left, should say Fiscal 25 Cash Flow Education Fund. And this is the fund where we, is mainly funded by our tuition support from the state, and then we pay most of our classroom expenditures out of, out of this fund. So far for this year, we are, we are running well. If you look at the top left corner, so in July 1, the fund had a balance of just over $10 million. And if you jump to the bottom right-hand corner, as of now, we're projected to be about $2 million to the good, estimated to have a cash balance at the end of June around 12 million. Just to note that, you know, it shows on here that we're $2 million to the good for this fiscal year, but it's a little inaccurate in the sense that we have just started the, the expenditures of curricular materials, since that has all started running through this fund as of January 25. So in the top portion, we closed out the old textbook rental fund, and we moved $714,000 into this fund. And through, from January, when I'm projecting through June on the bottom, we'll have about $700,000 worth of expenditures in this, at least part of this fiscal year for curricular materials. So in essence, they offset each other. But if you recall, the amount that we are given from the state for curricular materials is about 150-some dollars per kid, which is well below the cost of what we're providing for our students in the classroom. And, you know, two years ago, when that was part of the budget bill, we've learned since then that that appropriation of $160 million in the state budget was too low. And most of our representatives agreed with that and was hoping to make us whole going forward this year. But unfortunately, with other costs increasing at the state level, and then the drop of the revenue forecast last week, it does not seem that we will be getting any increase in that $160 million at this point. I'm just hoping it stays the same. So where I'm going with that is, we will be incurring more of our costs for the classroom after June, more so in July, August, in September, paying those bills that come in. So that is a generally about a 700, $800,000 shortfall from the state that we will need to make up. And we have for the last two years, and that will continue as well. So, before I go to the next page, are there any questions on here? Okay. So the, since 2019, things have really changed in school funding where we transfer money from our education fund to our operations fund each month. We also have our referendum money that we are grateful for our taxpayers for, and really, those three funds all together work hand in hand. So this spreadsheet shows all those funds together to give really a true reflection of how we are currently operating. And so then again, if you jump to the bottom right-hand corner for this fiscal year ending June 30, we're projected to be right around, you know, $5 million to the good. That's about 5%. We are, we're happy with that, but also given what was going down at the, at the State House, you know, we need to be prepared for revenue decreases, especially because of Senate Bill, or now Senate enrolled Act One that Dr. Varco talked about. As he mentioned, schools are going to get particularly hard with that. And we don't have any other mechanism to make that up on the revenue side, unlike the municipalities, whereas Dr. Varco said legislators are encouraging our towns and the counties to increase an option income tax, but we don't get any of that money. So schools all around us are going to take it brutally hard here in the next couple of years on a tax reform bill that may have not necessarily been necessary. But that's just my personal opinion. So anyway, even though we're, we're running well fiscally here, as you can see, we need to be prepared for what's coming down the road for the next two or three years. We do have a declining enrollment. We're expected to probably lose, not lose, we have approximately 200 students less next year. And that's again, we've got 700 and approximately 750 kids graduating. We have kindergarten classes of less than 600 coming in. So right there, we have the cohort changes. And at current level of $7,000 a kid that we get in funding, you know, that's 1.4 million dollars approximately of less revenue we're going to get. But we adjust accordingly. We work with our HR department and so forth. So, we run a tight ship, and we make sure we're trying to push most of those dollars into the classroom as much as we can. So, do you have any questions on this?
You know, the one thing... Then I'm looking at that, and I, I keep thinking about the, the guidelines that you've given us over the years about your goals and the guidance that the state has given you. And can you refresh my memory on that?
So, we work hand in hand with S&amp;P, Standard and Poor's, especially for bond ratings. When they do their questionnaires, it's one of the things that they ask about each time we go out for a bond rating is, what's your cash balance, what, you know, how are we at? If we go back to the education fund, most of that money is going for salaries and benefits. There aren't that many unknowns throughout the year, once we, the school years get started. And our funding from the state is rather consistent each month. So once the school year starts and we get rolling, again, not too many unknowns. So I've, they recommend, you know, 12 to 15% of a cash balance in that particular fund. I'm perfectly fine having a lower balance than that, maybe even the 10 to 12 range at any given time. But that being said, when you put all three of those operating funds together is where you start having unknowns. You have a chiller that goes out. You have roofs that start, roofs that leak, that when our school bus cost go up 25%, we can't control those things. S&amp;P is now saying for your operating funds as a whole, they want to see a 30% cash balance for cash flow purposes. So if you look at the top there, that all operating funds cash flow page, for our average, we're right around 34% right now. So slightly above. So, we're in a good, stable financial position there. One, and if you see that, I say average finance, or excuse me, average cash balance, which takes the average of all 12 months. One of the things that when some members of the Indiana General Assembly feel that not only schools, but municipalities have too much cash on hand, is they're only seeing reports that we submit every six months, and those are our balances at June 30 and December 31. Those days are, are the highest cash balance we have at any time, because that's when we get tax settlement from our taxpayers and through the county. People pay in May in November, we get it at the end of June and December. And then that money lasts us for the next six months in our operating fund and in our referendum fund. So, come take a look at my May balance or my November balance, and it's going to be quite a bit less. So, got to be conscious of when they, when you hear some reports of what amounts have, not only we have, but the municipalities all work the same way. So that's where I try to take more of an average to get a more of a better picture. So...
Okay.
That's the long answer for around 30% altogether.
That's, that's okay. Hey, thank you. Yeah.
And any other questions?
Yes, Rob, do you feel as though that with the increase in insurance, medical insurance and that, where, could you address that just a little bit?
So, we've been fortunate, well, excuse me, we've been unfortunate that we've, our health plan has had a lot of cost the last few years. The trend in the industry for medical expenses is around 10% annually, and it's more in the 15 to 18% for prescriptions. So, even if all of our care is the same, we're going to see an increase in cost in that, excuse me, on an annual basis. Fortunately, for the past two years, the school corporation has been able to put more money from our side, so that, that entire cost to cover those things has not been on the employees. And we've been fortunate to do that. We're not sure we're going to be able to do that in the future with what's coming down the path from what's going down in Indianapolis. So that being said, what do we need to do? We need to try to reduce our expenses in, in other ways. So, we are working with our benefits consultant to find ways that maybe we could be, use the term, better consumers of health, healthcare, and look into some ways where we can reduce our prescription costs, not only for the plan, but for the out-of-pocket of our employees, and looking into maybe some alternative placements for some procedures that would be charging our plan a lower cost than maybe some other hospitals will. Little things like that that will add up. So, health insurance is a piece that we, as a school district, and my peers, and pretty much every employer in the country deals with. That's why health insurance is such a, a big piece of nationwide. So it's something we have to annually fight.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Yeah, just wanted...
And, and on that note, we do have a Health Insurance Benefits Committee made up mainly of teachers and a couple, Dr. Varco, Mrs. Castaneda, and I sit on that along with our benefits coordinator, made up of teachers from, every building is represented, and meet monthly, go over the claims, and make decisions for the plan as a whole. So it's something that we, that we do. So, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We don't make a decision on the claims themselves. The claims get paid by the provider through Anthem, and then we reimburse Anthem for what our actual costs were. However, changes to the plan, what deductibles might be, what copays might be, how the plan is set up, that is what the committee does.
Okay.
Yep. Sure.
All right, thank you. And there are no public comments, so we'll move right into our board comments and consideration of future agenda items. Dr. Malco?
The only thing that I had to report is that, first of all, I appreciate all the work that central office staff had to do to invite all of our attendees tonight. It's always a fun night to have. And I, somebody had mentioned mental health for teachers. Who was it? Was he?
I did, with the Wellness Committee.
They were talking about trying to do something to provide recognition for teachers outside of Staff Appreciation Week, as well as some activities to hopefully lower their stress levels.
Okay.
So that was one goal for the committee for next year.
I see, I see. Okay, well, it made me think of a, of a program that's coming into the Crown Point area. It's sponsored by their Rotary, and it's about mental health issues with students. And I think our former Lynette Belush is going to be one of the presenters, or that's what I've kind of put together. So that's on May 1, and that's in Crown Point. I think that starts at 6:00. And then you can come over for the big Jazz Fest in the auditorium at Lake Central High School. Got your day planned for you and your night.
Thank you. That was it.
Ms. Talent?
Just thank everybody for all the work and what was demonstrated tonight in all of the accomplishments of students, coaches, staff, and obviously the parents. So thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Ms. Kelly?
No comments this evening.
And thank you, Ms. Nowacki, for putting together this wonderful list that'll keep us together. And with it, we'll move on to Dr. Varco for Board Calendar Future Activities. Here we go.
Thank you. Our next meeting is May the 5, and that is here. It's a special night. We're going to recognize retirees. We're going to recognize our Teacher of the Year. So we look forward to that meeting. It is a joyous and bittersweet occasion at the same time. May the 5, the reception begins out here to the left in the comments area around 6:00 PM. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a motion for adjournment?
Motion to adjourn.
I will second that. We are adjourned.